Second session. Second. All those in favor?
Uh, no.
Thank you. Okay.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to amend the agenda to include a taxable bond, to modify item ten B. It should be, it should read twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six, SCAGO GO bond taxable bond and TAN resolutions.
Second motion.
Okay. All those in favor?
No.
So we'll be amending, is it eleven, actually, eleven?
Yes, I'm sorry, it is eleven. Eleven B, that's correct.
Yeah, instead of ten. All right. All right. So, all those in favor of the agenda, approve the agenda? All those in favor?
Uh, amendment, yeah.
Okay, with the amend, with eleven B being amended, okay. All right. Now. We have one public comment. And I need to read the board chair's statement first. The public participation section of the school board meeting is designed to hear comments from the public, but is limited to thirty minutes so that normal business can be conducted. During this portion of the meeting, board members will listen to concerns and comments, but will not answer questions or debate issues. Each participant will be limited to five minutes and will refrain from making personal complaints about school personnel or board members. Tonight, we have Stacy West that would like to talk to us about discrimination on certain students. Ms. West?
Yes, I'm here on behalf of my granddaughter. She has special needs and she's been currently enrolled in Ruby School. We have reached out to the school district multiple times. No one has yet reached back. The school goes to the fifth grade, but yet the district decided it's best to move her from going to the third grade to move her to a different school that she's not familiar with. We don't feel comfortable. We do not feel safe with the other school. We'd like to keep her at root. And I understand that, like, everybody's busy and all this and that, but somebody in here could've took the time, though, to reach back to the parents or to the grandparents. Nobody. We made multiple trips to the district and come down here also. We've also called. We left messages and everything else, and no one has called back. There's a lot of funding going on. Y'all get, y'all get paid good, but why not? If it was your child, you'd want what's best for your child.
Thank you. We'll have someone direct.
What's the child's name?
Check on them.
What's the child's name?
What's the child's name?
Marty.
Marty?
Marty.
Last name?
Carol.
Carol? Let me check on that. Thank you. We'll have someone check on that. All right. Now, we'll have a moment of silence, and then we'll do our pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. I'd just like to welcome our SRO, Jordan Jacklin with the link, administrators, principals that are here, now that school's out, and area citizens. Board members, you've been given the minutes from May twelfth, fourteenth, and sixth inch prior to the meeting. If I hear no objections, they will be approved by consent. And now, we have a special recognition. And Ms. Blackwell from the Mackbee area will do the recognize the Mackbee baseball team. We'll come with you, Ms. Blackwell.
I'm gonna shift this so I can talk to everybody. All right. Good evening, everybody. My name's Kaylee, like Ms. Burke said. Welcome to the school board tonight. If I could have Josh Tiller come up with me, I think he's got some words he's gonna say first. And Ms. Young, if you'll come with us, too. Just some background on Coach Josh real quick while he's making his way. He is our one A coach of the year for us this year, so. And he's only been with us for three years. So he's been our coach for three years now, and he's already got a state title under his name, so we're appreciative of that and all your hard work. And I think Ms. Young is two years, and this is her first state as a principal, so looking good for the future here. I'm gonna turn it over to Josh. He's gonna introduce the kids, and then I'll follow back up after.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the board. Thank you for the invitation and the recognition that you've given us tonight. It's truly an honor for us to be here. I'm gonna give a little brief recap of our season and a little bit about our program. We finished the season with a twenty-eight and six record, including regular season wins against teams in every classification. We had seven wins against two A schools, one win against a three A school, one win against a four A school, and one against a five A school. Finished our playoff run with a nine and two record. During our playoff run, we had six wins against teams that ended up being ranked in the top five in the state of Class A. We had three players recognized as players of the year. Senior Aiden Hughes was named Class One A Co-Player of the Year by Diamond Prospects. Junior Hayden Griggs was named Class One A Pitcher of the Year by Diamond Prospects. Senior Landon Tedder was named Region Two Co-Player of the Year by the South Carolina Baseball Coaches Association. I'm really proud of those guys. We graduated six seniors who will be greatly missed for their leadership on and off the field. At these ti, at this time, I'll call them up by name, and as soon as you get your name, y'all come up. The seniors would be Aiden Hughes, Landon Tedder, Cohen Reed, Colton Wallace, Evan Norris, and Tyreek Wright. Remaining players are Hayden Griggs, J.J. Melton, Hunter Griggs, Campbell Byrd, Manning Tolson, Chris Stone, Peyton Brigman, Cooper Rollings, Lucas King, Harley McLaurin, Skylar Freeman, Cam Stone, and Zane Morton. Our coaching staff this year included Jason Rhodes, Taylor Catton, Jordan Mendoza, J.L. Schaaf, and Matt Isia. One of the biggest things that I'm proud of with our coaching staff, five members of our coaching staff are former alumni and baseball players at Mackbee High School. So five of us played ball there. They graduated from Mackbee, so we're really super proud of that. The last thing I wanna touch on is the amount of support we receive from our community and our alumni program. Financially, we couldn't make it if it weren't for those two groups. Community members, local businesses, and the support from our alumni really go a long way with us. And that's on top of our fan base being one of the best fan bases in the state. So, thank y'all.
Thank you, Coach Josh. Just to echo off of him, we are extremely proud to have been alumni to introduce you today. I was honored to be able to do that for you all. Thank you to the parents, the fans, the town of Mackbee, the concession stand workers, and anybody else I missed on your support for these boys. And on behalf of the Chesapeake County School Board, we appreciate all you did, and we congratulate you again, and I hope to be here next year doing it one more time. Thank y'all.
Coaches, what, what, whatever three player, you called that three player that was made all state, I didn't understand what you're talking about.
Only one of us here, the other was on state, but Aiden Hughes.
Okay, that's all right. I can say it.
Yeah.
He was, he was named One A Player of the Year.
One A Co-Player, okay, yeah, yeah. Congratulations, young man.
Very proud of y'all, guys. Next year, we'll see you again. If y'all wanna go home, you're more than welcome to go home. You can leave now if you'd like, or you can stay. Doesn't matter. All righty. Mr. Caskey, financial report.
Madam Chair, Dr. Hale, members of the board, good evening.
Good evening.
I try to not take offense to the fact that everybody always wants to leave right before I speak.
Well.
Proud of this evening. You all received a copy of the financial review for the month of April. Any questions on that review?
Any questions? No?
All right. This evening, we present for your consideration resolutions for our annual SCAGO General Obligation Bonds, Tax Anticipation Note, and a taxable bond that will be used to pay premiums on our taxable twenty fifteen AIPRB bond. Mr. Bob Dameron from our financial advisor, Compass Municipal, is here this evening to go through some of the details on those bonds and to field any questions that you might have. And also available for questions is our bond attorney, Ms. Franny Hazer, refer for me.
Thank you, Kevin. It's good to be with you all tonight. We have three issues in front of you that are very similar to what you pass every year. The tax anticipation note is simply a cash flow tool that allows to make sure that there's adequate funds in the district to pay before the taxes start coming in. And, you know, the taxes don't start coming in until November, December, January, or February, and sometime, and the light bills and the teachers won't be paid before that happens, so you have a cash flow tool such as a TAN that just gives you a little extra cash. It's paid off by March the first of each year, or as soon as those taxes come in, and just gives some assurance to the district and to the finance staff that there'll be adequate dollars there to make sure that the operation of the school district continue on without any blips or anything that happens. Occasionally, you don't need these at all, but it does happen from time to time. Taxes come in a little bit slower. Maybe the tax bills didn't get out quite as fast as they should, or that sometimes the state is a little slow in their reimbursement. So a TAN provides that flexibility for the district and security for the district. There's two bond issues that are on the agenda tonight. One is the annual SCAGO General Obligation Bond. This is top sold on a tax exempt basis, and it is publicly bid. That is used to help make payments on one of your installment purchase revenue bonds that you've had on the books for years. And then the balance of it is in new capital money that's available to the school district each year to operate and provide various capital needs that you have, many of which were approved in the referendum for the sales tax referendum last year. We will size that bond exactly so that it doesn't increase taxes in any shape, form, or fashion. We maintain a budget reserve, a balance reserve, and the debt service fund that the treasurer holds to make sure that happens, so there'll be no tax increase in regard to either of these two bond issues if you adopt it tonight. We think that it will be approximately seven point four million of net new capital money that's being generated from the sales tax that's coming in, but we'll finalize that number after the county sends us the numbers as of six thirty for the collections for the year. And so we look at all those numbers, work with Kevin and his staff, and make sure that, again, they're sized properly so that there's no increase in taxes. So a lot of that money's already collected. You can't get to it unless you actually issue it. So this is your way of being able to issue the bonds and have access to that seven point four. If, for some reason, the collections are greater than what we anticipated that they would be, then there may be a little bit extra money available above the seven point four, so there's a not-to-exceed number in the resolution that allows us to go up to that number. But again, with our assurance is that we work with the county to make sure that there's no tax increase. The other taxable bond is a payment on the original installment purchase revenue bond that was issued probably framing two thousand and six. It was, this portion was taxable in nature, so to make the payment on that bond, we have to go ahead and issue it as a taxable bond. It'll be issued with your approval in June, and it'll be paid off in March, so the actual time you're paying interest is very, 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 very small amount, but it is a way of making the payments on that. It's kind of part of what you all have been doing for a number of years, so there's not really any new items other than the dollar figures are a little bit different than normal. I'll be glad to answer any questions that you might have.
Any questions?
Franny can explain the legal document.
Good evening. It's always great to be with y'all. I think coming in, you said, "Oh, y'all are here." I said, "Yes, that time of year. Summer is here. We get to come visit with y'all." As both Kevin and Bob mentioned, you've got three resolutions for your consideration tonight. They are substantially identical to the resolutions you've seen in each of the last several years, and I'd be glad to answer any questions y'all might have. Questions, folks? All right, thank y'all. Thank you.
Thank y'all both for that information. So now, we will recommend for approval each one of those three resolutions.
Okay, I entertain a motion to approve the twenty-five, twenty-six SCAGO GO bond.
So move.
TAN resolution. We do it all at one time?
You wanna do all three of them in one TAN?
Is that good with you?
That's fine.
And the eight percent bond? Is that right? Yeah.
I still move.
Okay, second? All those in favor? Okay. All right.
All right. Also, this evening, we're gonna recommend for your approval of the twenty-five, twenty-six general fund budget. This will constitute the second reading of the budget.
I need a motion to approve the budget.
So I'm, I'm gonna run through to the good slides.
Okay, you're gonna go ahead and do it? Thank you.
We did have, I mentioned this at our last reading, the changes to proviso one point three, that's our state aid to classrooms proviso. There was a proposal in place to change the charter school virtual student ratings from point six five to point three five, which would have generated about an eighteen million dollar swing between charter school revenue and traditional revenue. There was a compromise made during conference committee that actually took that to point five rather than down all the way to point three five, so we're gonna get less than that. We haven't gotten the exact, the exact projections yet what that's gonna generate, but it's gonna, I'm assuming it's gonna be in the neighborhood of about a hundred thousand dollars when you add in a couple of other fluctuations between the last meeting and this meeting for those projections. It did keep the language in there that requires that in-depth analysis of the funding formula during this fall. We actually have received a fiscal impact request from Mr. Frank Rainwater, who's in charge of all those fiscal impacts for the legislature, so we're optimistic that we're gonna see some, some movement in that area, and we can actually make some substantive changes and fix some of that inequitability this year. This slide, you've seen several times. These are just the new mandated expenditures for this year pushed down from the state. We have the increase to the teacher salary schedules as a fifteen hundred dollar increase across the board, plus our annual step for teachers, four point six percent increase to employer health costs, and then that two percent increase to the state minimum bus salary schedules. We also are looking at pay increases for non, non-teachers. There'll be a step increase for all employees, and then this is the only thing in here that I believe is different from the last presentation. This cost of living adjustment, which is one percent, is now gonna include all non-teacher schedules, which does include administration. Last, the last presentation, that was excluding administration. And that, that's, that's a change of about fifty thousand dollars to the general fund. We had the twenty-five thousand dollar increase to the ART program that was, that was in there last time, and then that's just that same four point six percent increase in employer health costs. So as we look at the revenue increases, this is based on our final projections. This is out of conference committee. That state lump sum proviso one point three, that's up to one point six three six. Our tier three hold harmless stayed the same at four points, or four hundred sixty-two thousand dollars. That same increase in county tax projection is seven hundred and fifty thousand. We had those other state increases of about four oh seven, seven ninety, and then that millage increase of three mills for two hundred ninety-four thousand dollars, bringing our total bound, our budgeted general fund revenue to seventy-eight million, two hundred nineteen thousand, eighty-five dollars. The expenditure budget, like I said, this is very, very similar to the last time. You guys saw it, that same, same numbers. The only thing that has changed there is that one percent cost of living increase, including the administration, went from one hundred thousand to one hundred and fifty thousand, which brings our total proposed expenditure budget to seventy-eight million, seven hundred fifty-two thousand, seven hundred seventy-six dollars. Our fund balance usage has decreased based on that increase in revenue, so we are now looking at a fund balance usage to balance the budget of five hundred thirty-three thousand, six hundred ninety-one dollars. And as we look at that over time, that brings our estimated general fund balance at June thirtieth of next year, so the end of next year, to nine million, seven hundred eighty-five thousand, four hundred seventy-seven dollars.
Of course, sir.
Yes, sir.
The five hundred and thirty-three thousand dollars. That does not include the original position that you asked for at the beginning, does it?
No, sir. Are you talking about from the work session?
Yeah, so what, what three? It was three of them.
So we had the, the bus monitors, the behavioral specialists, and the additional school psychologics. Those are the three that were moved.
So that's, nothing is included into that?
No, sir.
All right, now, let me ask you this, because I'm, I'm somewhat concerned about the bus monitor.
Sir.
And I know that originally you all asked for forty, and I, I didn't think that was going to really go through, but, but I'm just wondering if we have a reduced number, maybe a hyper mill that we can get started with bus monitors to put on there for those bus drivers, especially those, those routes that we are having issues with. What will a hyper mill, what kind of money we talking about with a hyper mill on a hundred thousand dollar house?
On a hundred thousand dollar house, half a mill's gonna look like about three dollars for the year. And that's, that's only if you own it. That's only if you do not live in the house. If it's an owner occupied. If it's an owner-occupied house for $100,000, you're not going to pay anything in school operational tax.
That's $3. So a $100,000 house and a $20,000 car costs, costs me what?
A $100,000 house, so if you have, let's just say, you saying half a mil for a $100,000 house, if you don't live in that house, if it's not your primary residence, that'd be $3, and a $20,000 car would be about 60 cents for the year.
So $3.60. How much will a half, how many, how many monitors will a half a mil get us?
A half mil would probably get you somewhere in the neighborhood of 7 to 8.
7 to 8 monitors?
7 to 8.
All right. What I'm, what I'm pushing towards, or what I'm leaning toward, I do know that in the Paisland-Jefferson area, that we, well, first of all, we have monitors on all of our special education buses. And I do know in the Paisland-Jefferson area that they have a couple of substitute monitors in case some of those main monitors can't get there, and they use those substitute monitors sometime on some of those trouble routes, whenever they have a problem there. And if we get seven or eight monitors and kind of spread them out over the county and let the transportation folks make that decision as to what route they need to be on, that can kind of help us, especially by next year, to come back and give us a report, to let us know how things are working. And so we got to move forward because we're having some major issues. Since our last board meeting, I got a call that in our area, they was actually playing football on the bus route. You know, throwing the football while children on the bus and playing football on the bus. Now, that's a big distraction to the, to the bus driver. And I don't want the school district to run into the same situation that we had with special education not having monitors on there, and we have a bus accident and be in for a suit or something. I just don't want that to happen because it had happened before with our special education issue. So all of my questions and all of my comments is leading towards asking this board to consider at least a half a mil towards the bus, towards next year budget, so that we can at least have a few monitors out there, and we can get a report back the following year as to how they're doing. Just, that's my suggestion, and that's my comment.
So, do you know how many, I mean, zero tolerance is on the bus as well as classroom or in any school? Do they, bus drivers take these children off or write them up, or?
I think I would have to defer that question to Dr. King. I think he might be able to answer that question better than I can.
They do, in most parts, and they get married and they give them up. But the bus rules and the stuff with the drivers, they actually write through the code and document when this behavior happens. So it's a progression of this, depending on where they are, depending on how many days they're off the bus. And in some cases, some can be removed for the remainder of the semester, some can be removed for the remainder of the year, depending on the progress of this.
Well, riding the bus is a privilege.
And all the buses have video cameras, correct?
Yes, I think the majority of them have.
So technically, they are monitored, or could be, we could review film as a district to administer additional punishments, correct?
That is reactive versus proactive. The reactive piece will be limited to when it's activated. The nonreactive piece will be handled or tried to stop it before that.
I understand, but at the same time, with the monitors, if they're sitting up front and something happens in the back, they're going to be reactive to, to an event, so they're not really going to stop it, because it's already started.
I would surely hope that we don't get a bus monitor and put him on the front row, when he need to really be in the back, where you can see the whole thing.
Yeah.
And then the other thing is with the cameras that have been brought to our attention is that whenever they go down some of these roads that's a little tough and bumpy, that camera bounce around, and in fact, I've heard doors pop open. I mean, the little camera door pop open, and you can help me out, if y'all have heard the same thing. But sometimes when they look at those cameras, they don't do nothing but see the top of the bus, because of how it's moving around in that box. So I had asked that we have somebody from the transportation department here to kind of give us an update, but the little information that I can find out is that we really need monitors on this bus. I'm not hearing this just from new bus drivers. I'm hearing this from seasonal bus drivers that have been driving for a while.
Would that monitor have the ability to write them up? I mean, as far as discipline area, or would it have to still come through the bus, the actual driver? Thank you.
How many?
In light of that, Madam Chair, how many, we talking about getting all bus monitors? Like, across the board, no monitors at all?
No, they still, we have monitors now on special ed buses, but how many hours a week are we talking about these bus monitors would work?
It'd be whatever our average, you have to be able to average bus hours.
I think it would be either two hours a day or three hours a day. So if you were to, I think that would be.
Is that morning and afternoon?
Yes, ma'am.
How long are they on the bus in the morning?
They kind of vary. Some of them have two hours a day, some have three hours a day. Some are out for an hour or less, some of them are an hour, hour and a half.
Because I'm just wondering if they would get into the point where we'd have to pay benefits for them?
I'll interject there. I would say that the majority of those that would end up becoming monitors, and those that are monitored right now, are those that are duly employed, similar to our bus drivers right now. So they're, they're employed in our schools.
Teachers, aides, whatever. Cafeteria workers.
So we, most of them are already getting benefits as it stands right now.
Are we having, Mr. Brown, are we having issues with the cameras? Not enough of them? I know our roads in Chesapeake County is pretty rough.
We have a person that we choose to, to make sure of our cameras. He comes in monthly to check those repeatedly, and if we have an issue, we call him the director.
If we have to, we'll use capital for it, use that fixer. They need fixing.
So, Madam Chairman, I move that we add a half a mil for bus monitors, let the transportation department figure out where they are most needed, along with this budget, and accept this fund balance budget as it is with a half a mil increase. If I can get a second.
So is that three and a half mills?
That would be three and a half.
Wait a minute, that'd be what now?
You got three already in there. There's, you already got three in there.
You got your three mills already in there?
That's three mills, that would be three and a half, yes, sir.
I just asked, I just asked that question. I thought that three mills cover the psychologists and the behavioral scientists?
No, no, no. Those were, those were additional expenditure pieces, but the three mills have remained in every time.
Okay.
The expenditures were taken.
So that would take care of it? The three mills would? No, the three mills won't take care of the bus monitors.
The three mills, the three mills are built into the numbers that you're looking at right now with that $533,000 fund balance usage. If we added that additional expenditure of the bus monitors, that would increase that, that usage unless we added additional half a mil of revenue, which would net it out to that same number.
And what number would you, if we throw out eight bus monitors, what number is that going to look like? You said less than 50,000, is that correct?
Yes, it would be approximately a half a mil. What we're looking at, a mill's about approximately $98,000 in revenue. So call it 100, that's going to be approximately 50, approximately $50,000 that we would add on the expenditure and the revenue side, so that would net.
Okay, we had a motion and a second. Any questions?
For the past few years, this budget comes before us, and whether it's a mil or not, we're having to go back to the fund balance to balance the record. My concern is this, I mean, I understand, nobody really wants to see a tax increase, but I'm looking at each year that we are looking at, this year it's over half a million, with a proposed three-mil increase. In the previous years, when we didn't even do a mil increase, we were still looking at somewhere about $900,000, almost a million to balance. My concern is, and this is, I was in a meeting last week, and a school district is upside down at $6.7 million just to balance the budget because they neglected the fact of looking at, you know, and when you don't have a fund balance to even balance a budget, we're headed down that same path. And every year, we're looking at balancing this budget by going back. And our fund balance is healthy right now to some degree, but the path we're on right now, we can't keep, we can't keep doing it.
Are you confident that those numbers that are coming off this year, is that pretty close? I mean, we're going to?
We're looking at that fund balance usage for '24, '25. As it looks right now, our tax revenue looks like it may be up a little bit. It's going to be after the end of June before we'll be able to really tie that number down. When you're looking at, I know that 1.7, 1.68, $9 million seems like a big number on this page, but when you're looking at it in the scheme of an entire $80 million-ish budget, you know, we're talking about, you know, less than 2%. So we really have to get to the end of that year to know exactly where we'd fall within that number. But last year, we, like we said, we lost, or I said we used, about half a million dollars of fund balance, and with no substantive changes to the revenue and the expenditures other than the increases that the state mandated last year, it's looking like it's going to be at least that.
But to play devil's advocate, what you just said, if we look at it as a percentage against what our actual fund balance is, that's a, that's a large number.
It is.
Oh, yes.
To, I would say if we covered that with millage this year, we'd have to go up about six mills.
Which number now?
The 533.
Yes, that would be a six additional, so that would be nine.
And with the new formula next year with the charter schools, how much is that going to cut us?
Well, the new formula, it's been in place since 2022, 2023 school year, and it's, it's becoming worse as time goes on. Just, that's just the math of the formula and the inequity that's built into it.
Mm-hmm.
So there is honestly not a way in the world that anybody could stand up here and tell you exactly what's going to happen next year. It's going to depend on a number of factors, including the total revenue that the state's going to hand out. The larger that is, the more Band-Aid it puts on the situation. This year, it just happened to get really bad because the revenue had been so low versus prior years that this formula has been in place.
And it's been six years since we raised millage?
2019 was last.
So we need to consider that, too.
My thinking is, is the state keeps saying, "Y'all take care of this. We go, we go raise this, and we going to give you less." I mean, it becomes a point that we have to make a decision on what do we do each time we bring a budget. I mean, I've seen this budget go from 40-something million to almost 80 million. And of course, we have minimized millage very well, but when we start getting to the point where we got to sacrifice safety, and I see the bus monitors as a, as a safety precaution, when we start cutting safety for the sake of trying to balance the budget, I think we really need to think about those decisions real hard.
We've been through this before with millage.
Right.
We had, when the state cut us so bad, we had to raise millage several years ago.
You're right.
But we've had a good run of not.
Yeah.
And we're going to have to.
This, this particular situation is, is less, it's less about the state cutting anything and less about the charter school issue, although that is a huge issue. The issue that is presenting us is this new funding formula that, in the way it's designed, funds school districts at a percentage of what it's actually going to cost to implement these state mandated changes. If they say, "Hey, we think this is going to cost a million dollars for you to implement, we're going to give you 80, or 80% of that, we're going to give you $800,000." So it's like, the state is telling us, "Hey, you are going to have to come up with this other $200,000 somehow." And that's, that's just the system that they've put in place at this point. And when they increase teacher salaries as much as they have over the last several years, nearly $10,000, and that makes up 80-something percent of our budget, that, that budget climbs fast.
Absolutely.
I would like y'all to vote please.
Including the mil and a half? Add it to that?
Okay, the bus monitors plus, how many bus monitors did we?
That would, that would, a half a mil worth of bus monitors would be somewhere between seven and eight.
What was that now?
If we added the half a mil as Mr. Sweeney asked for about the bus monitors, that would fund approximately seven to eight bus monitors. We could throw seven on there for conservatism.
Let's go with seven.
All right.
And see how that works, if it becomes effective. Because it depends on who you put on the bus, how effective it's going to be.
Of course.
Okay, and in that motion, was that another half a mil? So it's three and a half mills?
No, that's what was that. That's what I'm saying.
To cover that?
That's, that's my motion.
Okay, and we had a second from?
Second.
Dr. Coleman. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those nay?
Nay.
Okay, that's three nays.
Four.
Four? Okay. And we don't have Dr. Chapman here, so.
That's, how many, how many ayes did we get? Because?
Four.
Four?
Four.
And we got one and a half.
So we've got a tie.
Yep, it failed. You want to try another motion?
I'm making a motion without a tax increase, I don't care.
Do I have a second?
A second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Got to ask for a show of hands, Madam Chairman.
That's four. Just want to make you aware. The wheel could run off and in next year, and we'll have to dip further into the fund balance. Okay.
So the motion failed or passed?
It failed. It's been four to four.
I think.
So we don't have a budget?
We don't have a budget.
Uh-uh.
So can we move this to?
You can try again.
Mar, can we move this to tomorrow? And put it on the agenda for tomorrow since we have this special meeting?
I move. I know agenda tomorrow.
Well, we don't know, we might have another board number here.
Typically, you're going to have to, you're going to have to have 15 days notice posted on newspaper.
Oh, that's right.
Now, would that take us to that June 30 thing, to get this budget passed?
That would take us past the June 30 date.
That's what I was thought, and we know what that means.
We'd like to have a special meeting, and we could do it by zone.
Okay.
What if we were to make them, I mean, do that motion as it sits, add the bus monitors to it, and leave it at three mills and not three and a half? I just, it doesn't make any fiscal sense to continue to kick this down the road and think that we're never going to increase taxes and we're going to be fine, because you can look at the number, it's, it just doesn't make sense. People don't want to talk about tax increases, but it, so I'll make a motion that we do a three-mil increase, and we add the bus monitors at what would be the equivalent of half a mil. So call it a two and a half mil and a half for a bus, however you want to call it, with a total of three-mil increase, and we'll try it again.
I second that. All right, discussion. So your motion is two and a half mil towards the budget, and half of that mil will go towards the bus monitor?
Yeah, and a half a mil to, for a total of three.
All right.
Makes sense.
Okay.
I have a discussion on that. Mr. Kaski, about two months ago, I asked you to itemize, and did you get that itemized about one point six million of this money went to?
So, the one point six million is, it's, it's not truly itemizable. Uh, that one point six million is essentially just our difference between revenues and expenditures. So, because it's a general fund number, uh, that's everything from teachers in the classrooms, aides, supplies, purchase services, travel, everything that goes into that general fund, and you could truly assign that one point six, eight million to any, any one point six million dollars of that eighty million, and it would be accurate. Uh, there's nothing that is specifically identified based on that overreach, because there's, the first dollar is no less important than the last dollar, if that makes sense.
So, you dropped it down from the one point six million that, that you dropped it down to eight hundred and something thousand?
I'm sorry?
Now, you've asked this, the, the one point six is not up there, so you're asking now for the, the dropping down from the one point six, is that right?
One point six was last year.
Okay.
That's what, that's what you used to balance.
Um, okay, we had twenty-four, twenty-four certified teachers. Uh, just say we had twenty-four this year, and that's gonna be around one point five mil, where'd that money, where'd that money from last year that went into this year? Where did that money go? I would like for you to answer that.
I'm, I'm, I'm following your question.
Okay, we had twenty-four uncertified, uh, we had twenty-four certified teacher jobs that were vacant.
Vacant, yes, sir.
Just say an average of six hundred sixty thousand dollars, that's an average, say twenty-four, that would be almost one point five million dollars, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay, where did that money go when we, last one, year before that, it come back in, we gonna have that money to come back in this year? What, I, I wanna itemize where this taxpayer's money is going, and I wanna itemize to the sleeve where this taxpayer's money to Chesterfield County is going.
Yes, sir, so the, when we're talking about vacancy savings like that, um, the, these positions are not totally vacant. These are positions that are being filled by a substitute, they're being filled by a contract teacher, specifically, we have a lot of contract teachers in the district, and when you employ contract teachers, they're gonna cost more than employing a regular teacher. So, those vacancy savings get eaten up really, really quickly, specifically just filling the classrooms that are vacant. So, it, it's not like we, we're just, we're, we're not educating the kids that are in those classrooms, we have to provide some sort of service to them, even though there is not a teacher hired for the district to be in that classroom.
I, I understand that, but it's not a certified teacher type, so it would be lower?
It, it is a certified teacher, it's just not our certified teacher. These are, these are contract teachers that don't work for Chesterfield County School District, they work for a contracting company, and they're actually charging more for that service because they're going out, they're finding, they're, they're identifying the teachers and they're putting them in our classroom.
I'd like to see where the, uh, where the money went, I'd like to see that, itemize where that one went, what come back in, that's what I'd like to see.
Okay.
And Mr. Kaski, the tax and the millage, I know you said it goes on the second home, cars, small businesses get hit with that as well pretty hard, and/or, now, a lot of big businesses get tax breaks via the county, they would be...
With a fee and lieu agreement?
Yeah, they would probably be exempt to this millage increase, which...
Anyone that had a fee and lieu agreement would be bound to that agreement rather than property tax, property tax settlement.
But basically, that small business owner is gonna be one catch in front of it, they may not have a fee and lieu payment.
Those, those small businesses are gonna be assessed at, at six percent, just like anybody who would own a, uh, own a house that, that is not something they live in in the county, uh, any, any non-owner occupied property or business real property.
Same rate of car.
Six percent, sir.
Six, and you have to have, to get a fee, you've got to have, the threshold is two point five million. So, larger industries are gonna have that. Plus, the state is cutting taxes this year, too, personal taxes. So, you had a motion to accept the budget with two and a half mills, right?
Correct, two and a half mills and then doing the additional half mil to fund the, bus monitor positions, so...
And we had a motion and a second?
Second.
Okay, we've had discussion, any more discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. All those nay?
Nay.
We've got a full, full tally.
Okay.
Madam Chairperson, if I'm in order, I, uh, suggest that we give a fifteen day notices and come back at a later date and make a decision on this, on this motion when we can have full board.
Mr. Kaski, in fifteen days, do you think you will have more information from the state?
This is the, this is largely the, all the information that will happen, state, that's, that's their final projection.
This is, this is it?
This, this is it. Um, the fifteen days is not necessarily fifteen days from today either, it's fifteen days from whenever the newspaper can post and another, another posting, so it would be, uh, this Thursday when we got it to the link, and it would run in the following Wednesday's paper, so it'll be fifteen days from then.
Fifteen days from the time it ran in the paper?
Yes, sir.
So, we put it, I thought if we could put it on the internet and, I mean, on our social media, uh, radio and what have you, that we could do it two weeks from today?
I wish that was the case.
So, that's not the case?
No, sir. The state regulation is very clear that it must be a newspaper of general circulation. It's a very old law, it needs to be changed, but that is the law.
We need to jump to the end.
So, that'd be the twenty-seventh, which is a Friday.
So, we're looking at twenty-six, so twenty-seven?
Do you count Thursday as a day, first day?
I think there's some gray area there.
So, it could be the twenty-sixth?
That would be day fifteen.
Okay.
This should be in the paper this Thursday, the attitude is, I mean, the attitude is here now.
It, it would run, it would run next, next Wednesday. So, we had the, the, usually that deadline is to get, to get them by this week.
Oh, okay. Can't stop the press, huh?
So, you'd have to go fifteen days from...
Thursday?
Next Thursday, or this?
Next, next Wednesday.
Next Wednesday.
The link is what we had posted in last time, the link runs on Wednesday.
Nope, that'll be June, July third.
Well, it's a big time, July third.
Workdays are every day.
We can get in the...
Workdays are every day.
Could do a continuing resolution, uh, it's not something that we typically recommend doing, but it is something that is possible. So, that, yeah, we could do a continuing resolution to put us after that day, we would have to come in and approve us to essentially operate for three days on a continuing resolution budget.
Top of the, in that mic.
Oh, sorry.
Current budget.
We would operate on our current budget for those three days, but it is a, a procedural thing that we would have to get done in the meantime, which would probably mean another board call.
Okay. Motion.
Motion.
To operate?
Can I just say one, I got this...
Go ahead.
My, my sentiment is this right here, now, I will repeat, nobody on this board really wants to raise taxes, and that's not what we really wanna do, but I'm looking back. If, if we bring a budget to this chair, or to this board each year, had we been doing like a one-mill increase over the years, we wouldn't be in this situation. And so, we find ourselves having to do what we're talking about doing, it's like a real pinch, for the lack of better words. I mean, you can't be naive, you gotta have, you gotta have a school budget, and the state is already saying, you know, we, we're putting pressure on grassroots and, and local government, uh, to determine when we mandate, uh, teacher, uh, staff increases and salaries. I mean, we can say all day long what we don't wanna do, but that's just the world we live in here, and I, I wish each one of y'all was at, I was at a board meeting in another county last week, they dismissed at eleven o'clock six point seven million dollars deficit in the budget, all because nobody wanna talk about what we gotta do.
I concur, nobody wants a tax increase with you a thousand percent, nobody does, but my question is, what, we've never really had the explosion that we're having in the western end either for a tax base coming in either, that we kinda want to need to, in my opinion, sit back and let's look at it and see what it does generate for us.
I don't think we can wait on it.
Well, you know, you may be right.
I mean, I, I get your point, that's a good point, and that is great news, but the budget is for us, and, and again, I say, you know, this is something that, you know, it's, it's tough for everybody, uh, but as simple as it may sound, that's the reality we're in.
Our mil isn't that large compared to other counties. We're ninety-eight thousand a mil. Darlington County's over three hundred, or around three hundred thousand.
Per mil?
Per mil.
Yeah.
So, it's three dollars increase on a hundred thousand dollar house?
That's for half a mil.
Half a mil, six dollars on a hundred thousand dollar...
On a non-owner occupied now.
Or non-occupied, exactly, and, and that would be a point that I would bring up, uh, as far as the growth in that Pageland area, the majority of that growth is on our occupied property that we're not collecting tax, 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 operational tax.
And it's gonna be ten to fifteen years before they're built out.
Yes.
Plus, they are not selling right now as quickly as the developers were hoping.
I got one question, how many of those ESR positions, why keep going back to that? Are we funding all of those ESR positions that we brought up, that I mentioned?
Yes, sir.
That's included in this budget?
Yes, sir.
Hold on, let's tell everybody again what's above of those positions are holding. How many certified school teachers do we have in the ESR position?
Teachers in classrooms, we, we have...
Certified positions?
None, we have, we have no certified teachers in the classrooms in the ESR positions. About half of them are in the IT department, and they're related to the one-to-one, uh, one-to-one initiative providing IT service support, and then the other half are instructional, uh, interventions in our schools, so they go around, they pull students.
How much money were we talking about there?
Uh, that would be approximately...
Under a million dollars.
It was under a million, I believe it was in that eight hundred thousand range, I don't have the number right now.
But we still get taxes on those homes, correct?
We would get no operational taxes, no, not on four, not if they own the home that they live in, that four percent owner occupied tax bracket, we collect no, no operational millage, we collect that service footage, but not operations.
The only thing those new homes would offer then to us is, is property tax on vehicles and whatever.
Uh, and then if, additional sales tax.
Additional sales tax, that's true.
But that, that also can't be used for operations, that's, that's specifically to those, specific to those projects that we approved earlier this year. If someone bought a home that they did not have taxed as their, their residence, if it was a second home, then we would collect on that house, but most of them are gonna apply for that four percent on rent on that home, right?
Madam Chairperson, I, I've said if we go ahead and schedule another meeting, I thought we gonna change too many...
So, it'll be July?
I think we gonna change too many minds here.
All right, so we'll schedule it in first part of July.
We'll have to schedule some, we'll have to schedule another meeting to pass a continuing resolution, unless we wanna do that tonight, which I don't, I don't have a continuing resolution documentation prepared, uh, but it is something that we could potentially vote on. I wish, uh, Ms. Franny Hazard was still here, she may, she may be able to answer that question for us.
So, if we vote for a continuing resolution tonight, that would give you the authority to go ahead and have that done and submit the paperwork so that we can operate until our next board meeting in July?
I, I can't answer that question for a hundred percent, but if that is the case, then that's what I'll do, if not, then we'll have, we'll do what we have to do anyway. So, that, I don't think taking the vote would be unadvised.
I'd just like to say that this year it's three mills, it's been six years since we've raised any millage. Next year, with what's going on, unless legislature changes it, we may be looking at ten mills next year.
Yep.
And like I say, it's been six years, if we'd raised it two mills every year, it would, we'd be twelve mills and we would ahead, but we're not. Sir?
Madam Chairman, I move that we give the CFO authority to go ahead and do a continuing resolution so that we can have another meeting, uh, pay, uh, so that we can address this budget.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
No.
All those nay? Okay.
Thank you.
All right. Personnel, Dr. Hazard?
This should be quick, I hope.
Yes, thank you. All I need is a yes to make this happen. All right, Dr. Hale, Madam Chair, members of the board, at this time, I would like to recommend the following exhibits for your approval, A through G.
I'm on.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Good night. Madam Stubbs, curriculum report.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Dr. Hale, members of the board, um, just wanted to highlight a couple of areas out of the curriculum report. Uh, the first is adult education, uh, summer classes are being held right now during the month of June at Palmetto Learning Center and at Central High School. Uh, graduation for adult ed will be this week, um, Thursday at six o'clock right here at Palmetto Learning Center, so I hope to see all of you here.
Ms. Stubbs?
Yes.
Masquerade?
Yes.
So, you had five people in adult ed? Was that two GEDs and three?
Those, those were during the month of May.
Okay.
Yes.
How many are in the class, or have been in the class this semester maybe?
I think, I would, I think the last I heard, maybe about fifteen, I could be wrong. And I would, I can get back to you about that. Um, CTE program, um, had our completer, uh, banquet for Central High School with a hundred students, um, and also at Sherawal High School with ninety-five. Um, the other schools had their CTE, um, banquets earlier in April. Um, summer program got it off, started off with a bang, um, uh, the program started on the twenty-eighth and will continue through the rest of June. Um, we've got approximately a hundred students in the district, um, that are participating in the summer reading camp, and those are our third graders and our, our cert ed students as well.
Let me ask you a question right now.
Yes.
We don't have a number yet of the third graders that need assistance that did not pass the test, we, we're not there yet, you, you don't have those results yet?
Uh, yes, we do, we have some preliminary results, um, I think it was about forty, is that right? Forty, forty students, um, that had to attend summer reading camp, um, based on the score with SC ready, um, and then these students will get a second chance to take I Ready, which is our formative assessment, and if they score four eighty-nine, then they will not, um, be retained in third grade.
Forty students through all of our third grades?
Yes.
That's pretty good.
We, we, we were ecstatic.
Yeah.
We were very, very happy with our results.
Yeah, that's good.
Yeah.
Okay.
We, we were very excited about that because they had changed the, remember, they had changed the criteria?
Yeah.
Um, and so, uh, we were excited about that number.
Well, that's a, that's a plug to our faculty and staff.
Yes, they worked very hard. Yes, they worked very hard. Um, the summer outfit, um, is going on now, it began last week, and so that is at Chesterfield Ruby Middle. And then on Thursday as well, there will be a program, um, at noon and students will highlight um, all of the activities that, that, that took place during those two weeks. So again, would love for y'all to come to that. Um, third grade teacher at Sherawal Intermediate, um, Ms. Mallory McKenzie was recognized as the Chesterfield County Rookie Teacher of the Year. Um, and then Ms. Laura Lovelace was recognized as the Teacher of the Year. Um, she's a science teacher at, at Matty High. Um, and then the retirement banquet was on Thursday, May fifteenth, at the Palmetto Learning Center. Um, highlight from graduation, Chesterfield County students were offered, um, in excess of eight million dollars in scholarships and awards. And so that is great news for our students. Um, with our testing and accountability, we had an additional, um, twenty-eight students that qualified for gifted and talented. And so those students will, um, be served next year in the fall. Um, at the end of your package, you can see the, um, um, invitation for the adult ed graduation that I spoke about earlier. Are there any questions?
Don't have any questions about your curriculum report, and thank you for keeping us update, updated during the school year. Uh, but I do have one thing I'd like for you to look into.
Okay.
Uh, and we talked about it earlier, uh, but the A B honor roll?
Mm-hmm.
Where, where students have to make all As and all Bs to be on honor roll. So you got maybe three students that's, I mean, you got several students that make all Bs, but they're on honor roll, and you got one that made three As and one C, and they don't get recognized, uh, and they have a high average, really. So I just like to, for us to review that. If it's, if that's a state requirement, then we probably need to be talking to state educators, uh, who, who makes that decision. A state official or? But, uh, that was brought to my attention and I just wanted to, for us to look into.
Okay, I'll get that information for you. Um, and we did work to make sure that our, um, Beta Club or Beta, um, qualifications were aligned district wide, um, so that was something we worked on this past year because it did differ from school to school, um, but I will check on that as well for you.
Well, thank you.
Okay, thanks.
Do we have two courses?
Yeah.
I'm sorry.
Come back?
Yes, we're requesting local board approval for our, um, advanced placement composition, um, and language as well as sociology.
So moved.
Second, do I have a second? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right.
I just, I just said Matty High, I read that, uh, that, what about the other high schools?
Well, we can use it for the other high schools. Right now, Matty High School, that, they were the high school that requested those two schools. Um, but I think once we get it approved, we can use it at the other high schools as well.
Um, thank you.
They were to need these courses.
All right, now, I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Hale for superintendent's report.
Thank you, Madam Chair. At this time, I'd like to call our Chief of Student Services and Administration, Dr. Morrow, keying up to present the second reading and request approval of the revised Board Policy ADF. Thank you, Dr. Hale.
Yes, ma'am. Good evening, Dr. Hale, Madam Chair, and members of the board.
Good evening, sir.
At this time, I would like to present, uh, the revised Board Policy ADF pertaining to school wellness for the recommended second reading and approval. Uh, this policy is for the protection of staff and students and for compliance with the law.
I entertain a motion?
So moved.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. And, uh, we have, uh, one holiday coming up, Juneteenth, which is on June nineteenth. So that's all I have, Madam Chair.
That's it?
That's it.
Okay. All right. We have a, a special meeting tomorrow at the district office at five o'clock. Don't forget about that. So our next one, interviews. July? When? Our next, we'll have a special meeting.
I'll be July third.
Third?
Yeah, I mean, whatever.
Is that fifteen days? Or what, can we stretch it to the second? The second's fifteen days. And Tuesday?
Aye.
July second? All right, then our next regular board meeting's August the eleventh at Palmetto Learning Center at five thirty. And then the law conference is August twenty-third, twenty-fourth in Charleston. Anybody else needs to sign up? Is it too late, Ms. King? All right. There, there's nothing else, I need a motion.
So moved.
Second.
To a draw. All those in favor?
Aye.